Okay.
Guys look lonely there.
This is the meeting of Thursday, June 27th of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a special meeting. Steve, can I ask you to call the roll?
Sure, and I'll start with my only compatriot here in the council chambers, Ms. Lankowski.
Here.
Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
And Mr. Scholman?
Here.
Did I get everybody?
I'm here.
Oh, Ms. Tabachnik.
Sorry.
Uh, I'm going to seat both Ms. Lankowski and Ms. Tabachnik. I don't see our third alternate, at least not as of yet. Okay, our agenda this evening are three public hearings, followed by a long list of minutes. The first public hearing is 2024-17 S U B. Andy Sumalidis, 70 Cranberry Road, proposed two lot subdivision to construct two new single-family residences, existing structures to be demolished. As this is a public hearing, I will explain how it's conducted. I believe the way we'll start this evening is we'll have a staff member explain what is being requested. Will then, if Mr. Sumalidis wishes to make any statements, permit him to do that. During that period, the commission members are welcome to ask any questions they'd like of the applicant or the applicant's representative. When that's been completed, we will open it up to the public for comment. When everyone who wished to speak has had an opportunity, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to the comments of the public. We do not respond, we are simply here to listen to what the public has to say so that we can take that into account. After the applicant has made his or her response, we will then close the public hearing and move on to action on our part. And with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Williams to give us an overview before we turn it over to Mr. Sumalidis.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholman. This subdivision application was received prior to the effective date of the new regulations. First, well, mostly due to the fact that they're creating rear lots, which are no longer allowed under the current regulations. The applicant had initially applied to create three rear lots, but there are wetlands on the property, so they went through the inland wetland agency. And after discussions with them, they revised the plans to, and to a two lot proposed subdivision. It complies with all of the zoning standards before the regulation change. There were a couple outstanding items, the applicant has addressed most of them. Two things were driveway easement not being labeled on the plans and the street trees that are a requirement of the subdivision regulations weren't shown on the plans, but those are conditions of my draft approval. And I will let Mr. Sumalidis comment on it, but we were also waiting for any comments from Wilton as a small piece of the property is in Wilton. And if there were any comments from the departmental referrals, such as the Department of Public Works, Transportation Mobility and Parking, or W P C A. And I think that is the proposal in a nutshell, so Mr. Sumalidis, if you'd like to walk everyone through it.
Sure. Good evening, for the record, my name is Andy Sumalidis. I'm a professional engineer in principle with Atlantic out of Westport. Just for clarity purposes, a portion of the properties in Westport, I think Amelia said Wilton, small portions in Westport, and I'll point that out. Screen here. Can you guys all see that?
Yeah.
All right, perfect. So this is 70 Cranberry. It is directly adjacent to, most of you are probably familiar with the White Barn Theater property. That was most recently, I think they just finished development of a conservation development there. So we originally started this process before the reg changes, got this submitted before conservation and P and Z. And the, you know, by these zoning regulations, we have the land area to get three, three rear lots here. So the subject property is about 3.2 acres and a half acre zone. So we're able to get three lots here from a zoning standard. We then went through the inland procedures. And as you could see, as we progressed through this quick presentation, we reduced it down to two due to some sensitivity to the wetlands, flood zones, and the such. So as I mentioned, the property is 3.18 acres with the accessways. There's a 50 foot frontage here with a shared driveway under existing conditions. There's a couple of crossings here, there's a brook that runs through here, there's a pond in the rear here. All of these converge at this corner of the property. There's an existing single-family residence on the property. There's a detached garage with apartment above on the property as well. So again, access is off of Cranberry Road, an existing bridge crossing, and a driveway that brings you to the rear of the property. There's onsite wetlands, as you could see here with these triangles, those are the delineated wetlands. So we have various setbacks from wetlands and watercourses and the such that really restrict full development of this property. And that's how we kind of landed on the two lot subdivision. So here is what this two lot subdivision will look like. We would have two rear lots as described earlier with 25 foot frontages, maintaining that shared driveway, the lots would be split. Here you can kind of see this new property line here. One lot would be here, which would be 1.88 acres, and the second lot would be here, which is 1.32 acres. We went through the process of doing schematic site plans on each lot, really to demonstrate how these could be developed and minimizing impacts to the adjacent resources, you know, primarily from a, from a wetland perspective. So here you go, is our site layout. Again, this is conceptual, just showing what a two lot would look like if this was to be developed. We'd maintain that shared access, shared driveway coming up. And then you would split off and get one house in general location where that detached garage and apartment was, and another house basically where that single-family standalone structure was. What's hatched here on this plan was when we went through the wetland regulations, this is basically a non-disturbance buffer that we agreed to in terms of keeping our sensitivities to these adjacent wetlands. So we did, you know, if you guys are familiar with the wetland regulations, there's a 50 foot upland review area from a wetland. And we maintain that as actually being a no disturbance. So somebody in the future, they cannot disturb within, within that buffer. In red, what you see here is the flood zone line based on elevation. When you're in a riverine situation like we are here, you have to be very cognizant of flood storage and compensatory storage. So no grading, or if grading does happen beyond that red line, you need to compensate by cutting somewhere else on your property. So your cup fills need to balance out when you're doing work beyond that red line. So we were able to demonstrate that you need to do very little grading, it's a pretty flat site out there. We showed where drainage can be done on a, on these homes, where what minimal grading is really required, as if I zoom in on lot two here, here's that red line, here's your 94 contour, very slight regrading that really needs to happen. So we understand based on the new regulations, when somebody needs to come in and develop these lots, obviously they'll be under the guise of these, of the current regulations when they come in with a single-family development, and they'd have to meet those requirements of compensatory storage and the such. So we really kept that in mind, moving these forward through the, you know, knowing that they're, they're rear lots, but also keeping in mind the current regulations and the restrictions of the current regulations and what needs to happen. So, so that's what you see here in terms of, again, drainage and, and the such. The current property is serviced by Septic and Well. And we have proposed, so there's a sewer line that was put in here when the White Barn Theater was, they have a private line that runs through. The owner of the property at the time received permission to connect to that line. So it's, it'll be a simple sewer connection here. There'll be sewer easement, you know, from this property through this property to get there, which is depicted here. And water as well, we're on city, we'll be able to connect to city waters, there's water in Cranberry Road. So they'll convert from well to water as well. This is just an erosion incentive control plan that we, you know, again, more, more sensitive to inland wetlands. And also as part of that buffer, just so you guys are aware, we, we did put in all these trees and shrubs and plantings along that buffer edge that will need to be installed as part of this two lot subdivision as well. We put boulders, we call them two man boulders, every 20 feet on center along this line as well. Again, from an environmental standpoint, to really, you know, future owners of this property to really know and delineate this boundary, this map will obviously be part of the map, you know, of the, of the subdivision that gets filled on the land record. So this will always be, you know, any future owner will always see this map and know what their limitations are on these lots. That is my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from commission members? All right, if there are none, we'll open it up to the public. Steve, are you showing anyone from the public who wishes to speak?
There is one individual that is joining us virtually. Ms. Edie, if you wanted to speak here, you're more than welcome to, you can just use the raise your hand function. There's nobody present that would like to speak, but there's no one present, so.
Right.
I don't believe you have any takers.
Okay. Then we'll go back to Mr. Sumalidis for any final comments before we close the hearing.
Sure, the one thing, let me just share my screen quickly one more time. It, they're not depicted on the survey, so we'll add them to the survey. But the requirement of trees along the frontage, again, there's a very narrow frontage here, but there are some existing trees along here that we feel meet their requirement, so we don't want to take these down to plant new ones, we'll add them to the survey, and if staff deems them acceptable, waive the requirement of additional or new street trees. That is all, thank you for all.
Any final questions? Right, if not, can we put up the resolution? And can you make it just a bit larger? Thank you.
Something else worth mentioning is that the applicant did request a waiver of the sidewalk requirement. We did not receive T M P comments, but staff would support that waiver as there are no sidewalks on that street right now.
Okay, thank you.
Is that in the resolutions?
The sidewalk requirement isn't, I was thinking I would add it if you, if you guys did want to require a sidewalk, we can add that in the resolution, but I didn't make a condition to not require a sidewalk. But I guess we can do that if you'd like to.
I would, or I'd at least like to wait for the opinion of T M P, because as we know, just because there isn't a sidewalk there now doesn't mean there might not be one in the future. And there are, you know, a fair number of people that live up that way that might want to walk, and it's, you know, a big expand, so yes, please. Unless anybody's.
What kind of language, Tammy, are you looking for?
I would say that I would like the applicant to include a sidewalk, but I would, I can also wait for the opinion of T M P to find out if they have any plans for future sidewalk in that, on that street.
Okay, then what about language that says they're required to put in a sidewalk unless T N P feels it's not necessary?
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you add that, Amelia?
Sure.
Yep, maybe change comments to confirmation team, Amelia.
Thank you.
Is that what you're looking for, Tammy?
Yes.
Confirmation that they're not installing sidewalks on that.
That they don't, or, I mean, it could be that T M P is going to put one anyway. Right, if it's in T M P's plans to put a sidewalk on this street, then do we make the applicant do it in front of T M P, or do we let T M P do it?
So why don't we change that language so that it says a sidewalk be installed per the subdivision regulation requirements? Should T M P require it?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any further comments on the resolution? All right, if not, let's pull that down so I can see everybody. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Okay, Mr. Rowena has moved.
Tammy, I'll second.
Has seconded. We can do this, I believe, with a, just a show of hands, all those in favor? I see that Mr. Williams has also joined us. Looks like it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Sumalidis. Okay. The next two items are public hearings of our own making. The first is 2024-27 R. Planning and Zoning Commission zoning regulations, text amendments to Article four and Article nine to revise the definition of lot or building site width, the location of where recreational vehicles are permitted to be stored in all zones, facade requirements for duplexes in the C D two zone, and window and facade requirements for the mixed use and industrial zones. Again, we'll conduct the public hearing in the same manner as the one just completed. Mr. Kleppen, I believe, will make the presentation. We're free to ask him any questions we want. When his presentation is completed, we'll open it up to any members of the public who wish to comment. When that's completed, Mr. Kleppen will have an opportunity to respond. We will again have an opportunity to ask questions, after which we'll close the hearing and move on to action. And with that, Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, and actually this one will be Brian, and then I'll.
Oh, okay, I didn't, oh, I see, Brian, welcome, Brian.
Hello.
It's your show.
All right, hold on, I thought we were doing Steve's first.
Which one is first, Brian? If I'm taking them out of order, then.
I was gonna do. Here, I have 2024-27, that's the one we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, all right, let me share my screen.
Yeah, technically you're first on the agenda.
These word docs open, so make sure I get the right. This. Dogs barking and kids screaming in the background, but. All right, so.
How about just a little bit larger, Brian? Thank you.
All right, so within this text amendment, we are proposing a few different changes. Most of these were kind of formed because of issues we were running into with people coming in with zoning permit applications. So it's kind of internally created, and we felt that there was an immediate need to get some of these things resolved. So the first one is the definition of lot or building site width. So as currently defined, lot or building site width says the length of a, the length of the principal frontage line of a lot or building site. The issue with this is there's no requirement that that minimum building site width be maintained for a certain distance of the lot. So there could be instances where people can create some really goofy shaped lots, because essentially they just need the minimum frontage amount, and then they could immediately cut that in and make really odd shaped lots. So under the old regulations, there was a requirement that that minimum width be carried back for at least 70 feet, or 90% of that width be carried back for 70 feet. We're proposing that we add in this language here in red, which requires that the minimum amount be maintained for 75% of the lot depth. So it's essentially the same thing as the old regulations. It's, it's a little bit more restrictive in that you need to maintain the full minimum lot width, and then 75% of the lot depth is generally deeper than, than 70 feet under the old regulations. So that's the, the first proposed change, and that hopefully, when people come in with subdivision applications, it kind of leads to more expected and uniform lot sizes.
And any questions or comments on that?
Okay, the next, the next one was storage of recreational vehicles. So this is a table within the regulations, and it says that recreational vehicles are permitted to be stored in the rear yard only and in the driveway. So the issue with that is in the driveway means that people can store them at any part of their driveway, so they could store them at like, you know, right when the driveway starts off their curb cut. So we would prefer that the, the regulation be revised to remove and in driveway so that they're permitted in rear yard only. So obviously you might have a driveway that goes to your rear yard, so once you get to the rear yard, you can store your RV in that portion of your driveway or your yard.
Brian, how do we define rear yard?
The rear yard begins, it's, so you take your front setback, and then you add 20 feet, so whatever your minimum front setback is, plus 20 feet.
Okay, thank you.
What's the definition of recreational vehicle?
I can pull that up for you. One second. You see that? All right.
Okay.
Okay.
What if somebody really just has a driveway that's, you know, two cars deep, it's on the street, they don't have a backyard? Would they be excluded from parking that vehicle in their driveway?
Yes, yeah, if they would not be able to park it in their rear yard, then they would not technically legally be able to park it on their, on their property.
Brian, is that's not much different than the prior regulations, all right?
Correct, the old regulations require that everything be stored in the rear yard, such as RVs.
Okay.
We do get quite a bit of complaints about boat storage in the front yard and, and some RVs as well, because they can be very large, and, you know, whether they're tarped or they're right up by the street, those kind of things.
Yeah, this doesn't include boats, right?
No, I think boat is separately defined, so that might be something to address going forward.
It's an RV for some people.
Right, that's why I was confused. And they can't put the RV on the street, or they can park RVs on the street?
I would have to check with either Public Works or the Police Department, I'm not sure what the, the rules are for parking those right away.
Yeah, I am in general concerned for people who have driveways like mine, but if this was the rule before, I'd support, you know, maintaining it as was.
Yeah, I mean, in some cases, if they have a tiny driveway in a tiny lot, and they want to have a big RV, they might need to store it elsewhere. And, you know, pick it up when they need it.
Yeah, I just don't want to have more stuff, you know, on the street, blocking sightlines and stuff, but this looks good.
Okay, the next is facade glazing specific to the C D two zone, which is the two-family zone and duplexes. So how we had written the regs is, but my clock's gonna go crazy, because we've just got them. The duplexes were sort of subject to the form-based standards. So we were looking at, if you wanted to do duplex, you'd have to put, you'd have to comply with facade glazing minimum requirements, and you'd have to comply with making sure that no identical duplex exists on the same block. And we thought this was a little too strict for duplexes, if we're trying to encourage more of those to get built. We don't subject single-family housing to these kind of rules, so we figured we shouldn't require duplexes to also be subject to them. Duplexes have some separate requirements for the frontage of the building. So we think how that is addressed is, is adequate. So the proposal is to delete the facade glazing requirement from the C D two zone, and then the identical facade variety requirement from the, the two-family zone.
You had that image, is that still in here, or is it in the something else? If I remember correctly, that sort of just like laid out or showed how the glazing seemed to be a bit ridiculous if we didn't get rid of it.
Yeah, yeah, so that I have coming up, that's.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the, the others portion of the C D two zone that we're proposing to change is, so this is kind of where I think the important part of the duplex requirement is, is that on the principal frontage, so the front of the duplex, that the building entries, so the front doors need to be under some sort of porch or portico or an architectural feature, it kind of prevents that, like, just block with two, two doors on the front. So kind of add some architectural interest and maybe kind of, you know, quell some fears of. Qual some fears of of what duplexes look like. Um, so the 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 change here is to state that if. Both front doors are on the front of the building, then both of them have to be under some sort of uh, porch. Uh, the reason why we're deleting covered from covered porch, it's kind of duplicative, I mean, this 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 word can stay. Um, porch is defined in the regulations and already says that it's covered, so I I figured it was kind of duplicative for bringing those purposes.
Uh, Brian, you're not suggesting any change, but that neck, that very next uh, line doesn't make sense to me. This modification.
Oh, so it's really just getting to to this, so I guess what what could happen is. You know, you have a duplex, you're gonna put two front doors on the front of the building, you're gonna cover one of them but not cover the other.
Well, I I understand that, but that still doesn't make sense. I mean, it's it's a language problem. This modification that each entry of a unit, regardless of its location. Will have some and additional architectural element of interest. Okay, that's fine.
All right, um, if no questions on that, we'll keep on moving. Um, so this is uh. Specific to, again, more just form-based requirements, um. I believe Commissioner Bryce had brought up a couple of these ones with window shapes. Are are the stained glass requirements, um, so. Window shape. Requirements is that uh, they essentially have to be square. Um, but then, interestingly enough, in some of the graphics that are shown for uh, like mixed-use buildings. Uh, in the regs, they show like rounded or circular windows. Um, and they're pretty common on some of those historic buildings on Wall Street. Um, so we wanted to add that you you could build, you could put those types of windows on. Um, because again, right now, if somebody came in with a a building and showed nice-looking rounded or circular windows, or you know, that there were just accents to the square windows. We would have to say, no, you can't do that, um, which we don't think was the the intent of the regulations.
Right, and what does that R after the word glass stand for?
So it says requ- uh, required, that's what R is the uh. What R means essentially.
Okay, thank you.
And that's just to say that you can do stained glass, which was Commissioner Bryce's suggestion. Um, so again, for the for the mixed-use zones and facade glazing, um, this is one uh, that uh. Mr. Cantor had mentioned of like sort of showing. You know, when we're we're coming up with the regs and what a minimum percentage of facade glazing is, um, I think. We're just kind of looking at numbers and we don't kind of see what that. Impact is on the real world or when projects start coming in and we're saying, well, is that really what we were going for? Um, so as the regulation for facade glazing is currently written is twenty to sixty percent of the total facade. Area for a non-shot-front building has to have glazing. Um, so the issue with this was, and I'll show the picture in a second, is the twenty percent is um. Sort of high, and it led to um, architectural features that would make a building look nice getting removed. In order to put in additional windows, um, just to hit that twenty percent. Um, the other. Or part of this regulation that's not great is it caps the amount of glazing at sixty percent. Um, we we don't feel that it's necessary to have a a cap on how much glazing you could have on a building. Um, it kind of opens the door for people to do um. You know, more more glass or like uh, facades on their on their buildings. Um, so what the proposal is, is to get rid of this text. That's crossed out and to have a ten percent minimum requirement of the total facade area be glazed. Um, in meaning that twenty percent. Minimum of this first story facade. Odd area or um. These different. Frontage types be glazed and then uh, continue the seventy percent minimum for shop fronts. Uh, so what I can do, I'll switch the. Screen share to kind of the issue that. Raised lowering the minimum requirement. Okay, so um. So this was uh, a. Proposal in the CD three zone, so it's a mixed-use zone, the three-and-a-half-story max. Um, so the the building that you see on the left. Is, in my opinion, uh, a nicer-looking building, but it did not meet. The uh, twenty percent uh, minimum facade requirement. Um, so you can see it has uh, the nice dormered architectural features. On the roof line, it has these nice porticos, um. And it still has a substantial amount of. You know, windows on the front. Um, so what had happened was the building that you see on the right is what complies with the regulation, so you you. Lose a lot of the nice architectural features and you end up kind of getting just a box with some windows on it. Um, so. With the reg change, uh, you you'd get a structure that looks. That can look like this as opposed to a structure that has to look like this. Um, and then just, um, unless there's questions, I just wanted to, so we referred this out to all of the required uh. Agencies, which included uh, the Harbor Management Commission. Um, who found it consistent with the Harbor Management Plan, because none of this really, you know, impacts uh. Anything that couldn't have been done in the past. Um, we referred it to Wes Cock, who found it consistent. Um, we hadn't made no comment, and then we referred it to Deep. Um, and then Deep found it consistent, but I'll just pull that one up on the screen since that one is. Has to just be. So again, this is just Deep, uh, who reviewed the reg change and found that it is generally consistent with the Crystal Management.
Are there any other uh, questions for Brian on uh, any of these changes? All right. If not, uh, we'll open it up to the public. Um, Steve, is there anyone who wishes to speak?
I'll give Ms. Edie an opportunity to address this uh, public hearing if she wishes to, otherwise there are no other uh, takers.
Okay.
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Um, then uh, Brian, back to you, any final comments?
Nope, that's it for me.
Okay, any final questions? All right, if not, uh, we'll close uh, this uh, hearing and move on to action. Um, we have a resolution. Brian, what was above that? Okay. All right, uh, can I have a motion um? To approve the resolution?
I'll move.
Okay, uh, Mr. Rowena moves, there a second?
No, second.
Okay, Mr. Williams seconds, um, any uh, further comments? All right, if not, uh, we'll do this again with a show of hands, uh, all those in favor. Um, and uh, with all those hands up, there's no room for. Negative votes, passes unanimously. My goodness, it's six forty-two. And we're uh, up to uh, the um. Final public hearing.
I can be very long-winded, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
Thank you, no. This is twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three R. Planning and Zoning Commission, zoning regulations, text amendment. To Article Four, to amend the residential building height. Determinations and modifications to frontage. Building types permitted in the CD. Four zone. And for that, I'll turn it over to um. Uh, Mr. Kleppen.
Okay, so my Zoom is, looks like it's acting up, but I'm, hopefully it's, I can still see the screen that shows, this this is. There's two components to this um, text amendment, um, you know, Brian and I kind of will work on these and then we kind of. I ideally, we would have packaged them as as one application, but it's just we slotted this one after the other one was already noticed, so we said, all right, we'll just handle them separately. Um, I'm gonna take the easy one first and the other one takes a little bit more explanation, so I'll cover this one pretty easy. Um, you'll recall that within um, the CD four zone, when we were going through and trying to figure out where. Um, large multifamilies could go, we we wanted to make sure that in certain areas that. There were ground floor, ground, ground floor uses to have some activation in certain areas, so we kind of restricted where. Just solely residential buildings could go, um. That worked almost, so there there were a couple of very distinct areas where that will be problematic, particularly along um. Martin Luther King Boulevard, so if you think about. Uh, the Webster Street Lot, which the city is trying to redevelop. Besides something of just a big, huge parking lot, that's not really doing anything except parking cars. We don't necessarily want or need to have more commercial space along that entire stretch of MLK, so. A couple of the different concept plans that have been floated around the past. Have looked at, say, having walk-ups, townhouses, or some kind of basement garden units. Fronting the street, so you still have that attractive, active um, street front, but you're not bound to have. A commercial use on the ground floor, so this regulation would kind of exempt that area from having to provide. Um. Provide that commercial use in the ground floor, so that I think that that's really the gist of that particular amendment, and that's the text you see in red. If there's any questions on that, I'm happy to take it.
Steve, I I get, I don't understand uh, a large multifamily building type shall not be permitted on state roadways. Uh, minor arterials or major arterials unless.
Yeah, so the the first part basically is saying. On those, and I can, if you need to, I I can pull up a map just to refresh your memory on where those are, I didn't have it pulled up, but I can do that pretty quickly.
No, I I I I understand where they are.
Yeah, so on those roads, you can't have a building that is just a multifamily building. So the the buil- the building typologies, there's lots of different ones, but one is a multifamily building, which is just a residential building. So a mixed-use building would be more the typical buildings like you've approved on Chestnut Street or other areas where the ground floor has some. Commercial component, and then the bulk of the building is residential, so you'll have like a. One-floor commercial and then, say, five floors of residential up above, with the idea being um. On these these identified roadways, we want to have some ground floor activation, except for uh. This section of MLK, which is in the CD four, which we don't think has to have it, if if they chose to go that route. That's fine, but they're just not required to do so.
Okay, I understand now.
So large multifamily building type is a different thing from the mixed-use multifamily building type.
Right, so.
It still allows the mixed use.
Exactly, yeah, so in the CD four, i- you can go to, and I can pull it up if if it's helpful. In within the CD four, there is um, the building typologies, and they show a diagram of of what that is and give a little kind of. Brief descriptor, plus there's a definition in in Article Nine, and it tells you on that page where those. Buildings can go, this is just putting in a clarifier for that. Large multifamily building, um, to say, yeah, it it it's permitted. Um. With this exception. That makes sense.
Pull up the CD four. Uh, I'm I'm not sure that uh, every member is uh, aware of where the. That falls.
Oh, you want the uh, the zoning map?
Yeah.
Okay, just give me a sec.
I'm sorry for uh, over speaking you, Anna.
No, no worries. I was just saying, are we sure that M- MLK is the only? Major, minor arterial, whatever you want to call it. That should have this. Option?
Ye- uh, I believe so, from what we looked at, yes.
Okay. But. Well, so Steve, is the goal to make? The sidewalk on one of these major arterial roads more user-friendly? Is that, is that the point of it, or are we trying to get retail on the ground floor and make? You know, make it a more. Neighborhood-y type situation?
So by and large, so on, if you can, let me pull up, I'm looking at it, not sharing it.
This primarily targets Martin Luther King Boulevard, you know, correct?
Just Martin Luther King.
Yes, so so this would sort of encourage townhouses.
Correct, that that allows for a different type of activation.
Yes.
So. Go, I'm sorry, Dearest, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, really, my next question was just in regards to regulations uh, regarding screening.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, like, what what could that look, uh, what could that look like? Do we have anything in our regulations that would encourage? Uh, some sort of screenage for. Uh, that type of use? On MLK, say, some townhouses were proposed before us, would we have? Would there already be something built in, or would? Would we have any teeth in enforcing or encouraging or implementing?
When you say screenage, what do you mean, like in the front, like blocking it from the street?
Yes, and also like trees.
There's landscaping versus screens, you mean like, yeah, so do you mean? Whether they have to put landscaping like on the street side of it, because.
Yeah, so yeah, like, let's say, like, maybe Arboridee or something. I don't know.
Well, then, that could be a pretty big sidewalk, right? I'm I'm thinking the building in front by O'Neill's Pub, those. Apartment condominiums, they all have front steps that go down to the sidewalk, but I think they all have a backdoor entrance, because I don't believe I've ever seen anybody going. In and out.
Yeah, because they have a driveway.
I looked at moving there.
Really nice. I always wish there was more of those, I lived across the street from them.
Yeah, I didn't feel like there was enough to walk to at the time.
Another example would be uh, the new building going up at the old Y site.
Yes.
Which are all going to be uh, townhouses uh, facing West Avenue.
Well, some of them are, maybe like half of the bottom of that building, but but if you're on a really busy road. If you live on a really busy road like West Avenue or MLK. You probably. Don't really want to step out onto that sidewalk when there's a wheels bus going by.
Well, they're they're not, I mean, whether the buildings are designed. Where that's your only means of egress is a different argument, I think with what this is proposing to do is. Allow um, a different building typology at the street on that one section.
Okay, so I, I'm not opposed to that, but I just think we want to make sure that the sidewalk's wide enough so that the people. That you want to step out there, don't feel like they're gonna get run over.
Yeah, tha- and and that. Section of MLK, particularly with the Webster Street redevelopment, will have very wide sidewalks, I think it's a minimum of eight feet in the zone. And we also approved that on uh, the fifteen-seventeen Chestnut Street application. There was a whole um, street face of walk-up units there. Uh, also with the Pinnacle Development, I I don't know if it was off of Merwin Street, that one. Entire facade, I think, had walk-ups as well. So so the map up here is the zoning map, um, kind of in the middle, the purple color is the CD four zone. So that's, if you can follow my cursor, this is up towards Cross Street, kind of like um. The where headed uh, High Point ones was up through here, all the way down to South Norwalk, down by Concord Street, so that. That's kind of the city's urban core, that's the bulk of the CD four. The other CD four area that we have is uh, the area rezoned for uh. Uh, Merritt Seven, Glover Avenue Project. Merritt 7, Glover Avenue Project. That's the only other CD4 area. So that, I think that's just a kind of little view of the map. So within this area, you do have, you know, you have 136, you have West Avenue, so you have some roads that you want the street activation on the ground floor on, and then some of the other streets, it's not required to. So if it's a side street, you don't necessarily have to provide that mixed-use building. But on those main corridors, that's where we want to see the, the ground floor activation.
Okay, let's move on, Steve, to the second part.
Hold on, Darius, did you get your answer, answer? Because I don't think we did. I, I mean, I think the answer is you wouldn't put screenage.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking more towards the other end of MLK, MLK, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, further down on MLK is out, probably is in a different zone too, so when you get down through that corridor. And there are...
I was just looking it up.
Yeah, there are, in addition to building types, there are what's called frontage types, which is kind of like, certain buildings can have, like, whether they have a front porch, an open porch, they can have certain types of landscaping at the front. So that's defined and listed in the regulations. There's a whole section within each zone about what those can be. But as you go down, further down on MLK, when you get into the transition from the mixed use to the industrial zones, there's a whole additional set of kind of, if, if this is what you're getting at, screening standards, basically, especially when they butt up against a residential use, there's additional screening requirements and buffers between those kind of properties.
All right, thank you.
Sure. I just have to switch presentations. So the second one is a little more involved, just because when we went to the form-based code from the code, traditionally Euclidean code, we had the one change was to switch, switch the height calculations for buildings, whether it was residential, commercial, industrial, no matter what it was, from just a flat numerical value. So you would have like your, your grade, where your ground is, and then you would measure either to the peak of the building, or, and often you would do to the midpoint of the roof line as well. So you might have one measurement for the height or two measurements for the height. The form-based aspect and the kind of the theory behind it is that people really don't perceive height. Numerically, they perceive height by story. So you kind of know where that lower piece of the building is, you know where that middle piece of the building is, you know where that upper stories of the buildings are. So that's how you kind of perceive the height, and then the more stories, obviously, the more, the taller and more imposing that building can feel. So the regulations, as, you know, drafted and approved, looked at the number of stories that each building could be, and within that height parameter, there was a defined height of each story. So for example, the ground floor story might be, for a residential zone, could be 12 feet. In certain commercial zones, the ground floor height could be 20 feet, or it could be as high as 30 feet. And then each story above that had a specific height requirement. What we tried to do was make the regulations as consistent as possible and apply that same kind of height standard and height measurement determination, similar on the residential zones as we did in the mixed-use and commercial zones. The problem being, which we didn't figure out until after we adopted the regulations, is, for example, say somebody had a cathedral ceiling, and you walk in and then the ceiling is 20 feet off the ground. You wouldn't be allowed to do that in a residential zone anymore. Or if you had a sunken living room, you might not be able to do that by the way that the height in-story calculations are done. And, you know, our goal was not to regulate single-family architecture to that degree. We really want to make sure that buildings aren't built too tall in any of these given zones. So we've decided, for the sake of long-term interest of the public, the staff, the professionals designing these buildings, was to go back to something similar to what we had before and just look at the heights from two numeric, two numerical measures, one to the midpoint of the roof and one to the peak of the roof. Other changes that we put in, in the regulations that were adopted in February, which I'm going to show you in just a sec, were a calculation of the finished grade around the site. And that's an important change, because previously, there really wasn't that calculation on, on the property. So somebody could, like, basically, what would happen a lot of times was, you know, you have a subdivision that was built in the 60s. Somebody buys an old cape or ranch, and they decide, you know what, we're going to knock that down, and we're going to build up, you know, a much bigger structure. As part of that, we're going to ramp up our grade on our property and, which does a couple of things. A, it ends up shedding water onto the neighbor's property, and B, it increases the height of that structure on the property. So we, we came up with, and basically, when I say came up with, we stole language from a neighboring town that seems to work pretty well. And basically, the, the gist of it is shown in this diagram. And, and we met with some Rowayton folks yesterday who asked us to kind of look at ways to, you know, while they understood the text, they preferred to have some diagrams to go along with that too. So I think what we'll do when we do the kind of next tweak of the regulations in the fall is put in the diagrams as part of the code. So I think that the pictures, like what is shown here, is a good example of what we do. So the image above shows that, you know, say that's the foundation of the building, and what our regulations say is you are to take a measurement point every five feet along the perimeter of that building, and that measurement point is 10 feet outside of the building, and that establishes your average grade. So within that circle of each measurement point, you take the lowest elevation within that circle. And the reason behind that is, if you didn't take it 10 feet out from the building, they would just measure it right at the building, and that's when they do that ramp up of the grade. So they're artificially raising the height of the house. So this will require them to, you know, be a little more true to the regulations. And the regulations also stipulate that the the measurement point can no, can be no higher than three feet above the existing grade. So if you look at that diagram again, what that shows is a property, which is pretty common in a lot of areas where you have, like, say, the street face of the property in the building is taller, and then maybe you have a walkout in the back. So you have to do an average of the grades around that entire building. You don't just do it at the front of the building, which is higher than the back. You, you establish that finished grade, and then from that point, you measure your building height. So there's two measurement points. This is kind of a representation of that. So that kind of very flat site shows a finished grade, and then your heights are measured to the midpoint of the roof or, and, I should say, and to the total height of the roof, which would be the peak of the roof. Now, if you had a flat roof, it's the same measurement point. You don't get the benefit of both. So if the, you do the flat roof, your midpoint height and your total height are the same measurement. So the regulation change would be, within the, the single-family zones in the CD2 zone, we would still keep this two-and-a-half story and one-and-a-half story. So those are, don't change. It's just that how that height is measured changes. So we're going to get rid of that finished floor-to-finished ceiling measurement, and then replace that with language, which is similar to what we had in the past. Now, there's one small, small change I'll talk about in just a sec, but that midpoint height would be 35 feet, and the total height would be 40 feet. So I probably should have added that in on the diagram, but say this is your finished grade here. This measurement point here can't be more than 35 feet, and this total height can't be more than 40 feet. And it's the same standard adopted across all the single-family zones. And Brian, you're going to have to help me a little bit here. The one difference between the old regulations and the new regulations is that, and I'm forgetting which zone, the prior zone had a total building height of 38 feet, which I'm not quite sure why, but, and then all the other zones were 40. Is that correct, Brian?
Yeah, so the, the, the A-zone, so the AAA, AA, all used to let you do, I think it was 40 feet to the peak. And then the B, C, and we'll just do B and C zones, were 38 to peak. So we're saying, why don't we just make those all the same? It makes it easier for residents to know that whichever single-family zone or two-family zone I'm in, the height can be the same, and it makes it easier for builders, it makes it easier for architects, and it makes it easier for staff. And it's ultimately a two-foot difference to a peak measurement.
Yeah, and, and to be honest with you, two feet is really imperceptible to most people. It's, it's, it's not a noticeable, noticeable thing. The key, the key thing that is different about these regulations, which I think is the most important part, is this calculation of the average grade, because we didn't do this before. And, and again, this is not changing from what you've already approved, but I think it, when we had the conversations yesterday with the Rowayton folks, they were, we spent a lot of time talking about this average grade concept, because I don't think they fully understood the relationship between the two of them and how they work in tandem. So I think when we do the broader tweaks of the regulations come the fall, we'll add a diagram in similar to this, and then similar to the height one. So it kind of shows and illustrates what those measurement points are, provides a graphic to the text, and I think will help make it a little clearer and a little easier to understand.
Steve, at what point does the applicant determine that average grade? Like, let's just say there's an existing house there, and they want to lift it. Do they, do they determine the average grade before they lift the house? Because, I, I mean, what we're seeing in, in the Rowayton neighborhood is it feels like people are kind of bending and twisting the rules and changing the elevations, and we've spoken about that, or changing the height of the property by putting, you know, barriers on either side and basically filling the property in with, with dirt before they put the house on top. So I'm just, you know, I feel like there's still a little room for interpretation on that, and that somebody might say, whoa, well, you know, I was three feet above, whatever, when I started, but then they dug a hole, and now it's a different, it's a different grade. You know, like, they've changed, they changed the topography, and then they're going to change that number.
So, so what we didn't talk about, because there's no proposed changes with that, is the, the regulations recently adopted also have a whole section, which is in Article 6. I think it's the first section in Article 6, which talks about grading. So within the setbacks, you're allowed to grade up your property one foot in height for every four feet you go into the property. So it's, that's called like a four-on-one slope.
Okay.
The old regulations had no requirements related to that whatsoever. Once you're beyond the setback, you can increase that slope to one-on-three. So for every three feet you move into your property, you can go up another foot in height. So any proposal for new construction, say they're building a single-family house, they have to provide us with, you know, not only a survey, but a site plan that shows all the grading on it. And so it'll show, and you've seen this on your other site plans, it'll show existing grades, and then it'll show proposed grades. So we'll be able to determine, based on the, the plans they submit, what the old grade was and the new grade is. Also, the paperwork that's required as part of their permits. We used to just have like a one-page permit form. It's pretty lengthy now, and hope we're kind of set it up for eventual online permitting in a year or two or so. But that new form has them fill in what all the grading and slope measurements are. And so we can check that versus the plans they submit. So all that has to be documented now. And the last piece that goes along with that is the retaining wall standard. So there are new standards related to where retaining walls can be located, how high the retaining walls can be located, how many retaining walls you can put on your property, which I think gets more at the kind of things you're seeing in Rowayton, where sometimes they are attractive, but it ends up with like an eight-to-10-foot difference between the street and the grade of the property. So a lot of these things all work in tandem, and, you know, it is more pressure and, and is more incumbent on city staff to review those in regard to all these standards and regulations. Because before, all they were looking at is building footprint is here, it meets the setbacks, it's not taller than the regulations require. Now they have to look at all the grading aspects, where all the retaining walls go. It's more work for us, but it's, you know, I think in the end, it will eliminate a lot of those concerns that you're seeing out in the, out in the streets now.
Yeah, well, especially with us in, in trying to encourage people to get out of the flood zone, but it really, I would say, puts a strain on the neighborhood, especially with the really small lots. And so obviously, if it's a, a small lot with a short front setback, you're not going to be able to go up as much. But I just, I think what, what we're doing, we want to make sure that it's harmonious with its surroundings.
Yeah, I think in the past, Tammy, under the old regulations, there wasn't really any restrictions on somebody going into their lot and changing the grade. And then essentially, they've created this new finished grade. They come back to City Hall and say, I'm going to build this new house. This is my existing grade. Now I can add three more feet on top of that, and then start measuring my height from there. So now, in the new regulations, if you're doing any sort of filling or excavating like that, you actually have to, in most cases, get permits now. So now we're going to actually have a physical file to say, somebody came in and did this amount of fill and created this grade. This is now, you know, we're, we're going back and measuring based on that. So even if you come in and say, well, I'm going to add this much, we'd say, no, 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 you, you created this finished grade. We're going to use that, so you can't keep adding more and more fill on top of your property. So I think we, we've addressed it.
All right, well, I hope so, because I also watched on the ZBA, an application for a property on Westmere, where the existing house was not in the flood zone, and the street is in the flood zone, but there is a big wall, a stone wall, one of those traditional walls. And the applicant said, oh, I need to cut a driveway in, so now, now my property is in the flood zone. And they were able to go up another story because of that. And it just seemed to me like, you know, they were getting away with something that wasn't in keeping with the neighborhood, and they used the combination of the, the flood zone, the height, just to go up. And the ZBA granted them a bunch of variances. That was their decision, of course. But it, it was really pushing the envelope, in my opinion.
Yeah, so there always will be exceptions, especially the ZBA has a different set of standards by which they make their determination, so there should be a very specific land use hardship related to that application. If, if we're ever in a case where we're seeing lots of variances for the same exact thing, then we know we might have a problem with the regulations.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Steve regarding these changes? Nick, did you want to say something before? Oh, okay, sorry. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution? You'll have to shout it out, since I can't see everyone.
Still moved. I'll just move.
Okay, Galen has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and Darius has seconded. Any other questions for Steve on these two changes?
And just before you vote, we did refer this out to WesCog, Arbor, and any other required agency. I, I did not see a response from DEP, but it was referred in the adequate amount of timeframes, unless they replied directly to Steve. I would, that therefore assumed to be consistent, which isn't surprising. We, we didn't hear back from Arbor, so therefore it's consistent with the Arbor Management Plan, and WesCog found it consistent with the Council of Governments. And then, Steve, just quickly, I think we put this, yeah, we put this together a while ago. You said the change of that.
Yeah, I just saw that date. Yeah, it's been a little, been a little while since we kicked this around. Um, probably to, that, does that work, Brian?
Yeah, that's plenty.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Uh, Steve, can you pull that down so I can see everyone? Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, uh, which has been made and seconded.
Mr. Chairman, do we, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Do we, um, I didn't know, and I just might not be remembering. Do we ask for public comment?
No, we didn't. My apologies. We, I forgot where we were.
We do have Ms. Edie still with us if she wishes to.
Okay, let's go back to that. Uh, is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on, um. Uh, these proposed changes? And thank you for that, Steve.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Then once again, we'll, we'll, uh, move to, uh, vote, uh, with my apologies. Um, again, we do it with a, uh, show of hands. All those in favor? Um, any oppose? No. And no abstentions. Okay, uh, well, that, uh, that completes, um. The major business of, uh, tonight's meeting. We now have, uh. Approval of a series of, uh, sets of, uh, minutes. Uh, let's begin with the minutes of, uh, May fifteenth. Twenty twenty four. Can I have a motion to approve? Uh, Richard, Tammy seconds, all those in favor? Um, we have one abstention. Diana is abstaining. Um, minutes of May twenty second, twenty twenty four. Uh, motion to approve. Uh, Tammy moves, Darius seconds. Um, all those in favor? Um, again, um, everyone's in favor and, uh, Diana. Uh, abstains. June fifth, twenty twenty four, uh, motion to approve the minutes. Richard, uh, moves, um. Sir, and Tammy seconds. Thank you, Tammy. Um, all those in favor? Show of hands again. Okay, unanimous. And, uh, finally, uh, June twentieth. Um, motion to approve the minutes of last week. Uh, Anna has moved and Tammy has, uh, seconded. Uh, all those in favor? Show of hands. Okay, unanimous. Uh, Steve, uh, can we just put a little more effort into. Trying to get the minutes in a more timely manner? Um. It's, it's, um, challenging to go over four or five sets of minutes. Um, much easier and I think people will look at them more carefully, uh, if we're doing them one at a time.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make myself a note to, we'll send them out as soon as we get them because I'd be honest with you, I get wrapped up with the. Application materials and then I completely forget about them.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate that. And Diana, thank you for, um, uh, taking, uh, those, uh, those minutes. Um, okay, comments to the director?
Um, only thing I will say is that we, you know, we went through a bunch of different. Uh, you know, medium and small text amendments to address things that we've identified as problems. There's some other things that we've, um, a couple of things that were implemented, I think that need to get tweaked. Um, and we talked about doing another public session in the fall. So my goal is to get you guys something. Probably in mid-August, similar to what we did in the past. So we would have. And, and I think most of them are very minor that don't require a lot of explanation, but we'll, anything that we. Think requires a little more explanation, we'll put a more detailed memo together for you. Uh, get you that package and then give you a few weeks to kind of think about it. And then if you're, uh, in agreement that these changes need to get made or other ones that you want to talk about, then we can. Kind of publish those and then we could figure out the best way to. Get public feedback. We could do just like a. Public hearing where so here's the regulation changes that the, you know. Staff has identified through working on the regulations for the last, you know, year or whatever the date is. Um, and then also solicit any kind of other changes or comments or concerns people have. And then. You could set a, you know, a formal public hearing adoption date from that point on. Uh, so that, that's one way we could go about doing it with the idea of trying to get something kind of wrapped up on this phase. You know, hopefully before the calendar year wraps out, wraps up. And then you can decide. In twenty twenty five, if you want to do another public session to say, hey, what do you think? I, I imagine for, you know, at least the next six to 12 months, we'll be kind of making adjustments to the, the regulations as we, you know, we implement things and. Realize that some things that we thought were a good idea were not good ideas and some things that we could refine will refine.
Okay. Anything else?
Not for me. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, I. Uh, like to remind people, uh, that earlier, um. In the week, uh, Nick sent out, uh, some, uh, very good information. Uh, about solar panels. Um, and, uh, if you haven't had a chance, uh, to look at that material, um, it's worth your time. And thank you, Nick, for thinking of everybody and sending that out. Appreciate that.
Always.
Uh, any other, uh, comments from commission members?
I have a quick question.
Sure, Richard.
Uh, Brian, on every little change that's made to these zoning things, you have to send a notice to deep and harbor commission? And, and all these agencies, is that a state requirement?
Yeah. So if the change, uh, impact is like with. So harbor is on in or abutting the harbor and then deep is if you're in the coastal area management zone, you have to refer it. To them. So technically because these changes are citywide, they impact all properties. Um, or impact zones that abut these properties. So we have to, I dare on the side of caution refer to them.
I just was curious about the windows, why? Deep and harbor commission needed to weigh in on that, but.
Right. Cause the, yeah, there's portions of the CD four or CD four W that.
I understand. Okay. I guess.
Um. I wanted to check in because I know we're not supposed to reply all to the emails, but there was an email chain that started. After our meeting on May eighth, I guess, where, um. My request to consider allowing small daycare centers in residential zones under special permit. Was, um, I guess opened. I wouldn't say that we actually discussed it. The discussion continued via email and was then stopped. So I just wanted to ask that that. Uh, be brought back. The last thing that happened in the. Email, I think, was that staff was going to look over it some more and get back to us. Um, and I just don't want to lose track of that. I also don't want to. Be having conversations via email that I'm supposed to have in the group.
I, I think, let me just, I'm just pulling up the, uh, your next meeting is July tenth. And it looks like we'll be able to cancel the 24th. So we gave you a whole month off between the seventh of August and July 10th, but we did put. Um. The daycare discussion on the July 10th agenda. So we have it planned to go back at that date.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
No problem. We're here to please.
We've gone through a lot in the last month or so.
It's been a long month, yes. Yeah, your meeting on the 10th doesn't look to, there's a bunch of, um, there's a couple of small applications, a couple of CAMs, but it doesn't look like. Nothing where it's going to cause a big public, public ruckus or.
That's nice.
Lou.
Famous last words. Ooh, sorry, Tammy.
Oh, that's okay. Oh, kind of a point of clarification on an email chain. If, if it's helpful to the commissioners. To get information from you, which I'm always appreciative when you send us an explanation. But we're not supposed to do it because it's not a public forum. Could we just? Put it in the minutes or something so that we can have this communication instead of, oh, can't talk about that because. You know, it's not secret. Right.
We can, we can have, we can have those discussions at our meetings. Uh, particularly this, this part of the meeting.
Right. But sometimes Lou, like. Most of us are busy working, doing our thing and, and it, it doesn't always occur to us. Here, and especially if it's 10:15 at night and we've been here for four hours and everybody wants to get off the meeting. What's wrong with these email dialogues if we just publish them?
You'd have to actually notice them.
Your email will be published.
Yeah.
My whole of my email or could like, like, for example, I asked what happens it with the Army Corps of Engineers because I. I felt that that was a legitimate. Uh, question to be asked with that ONG application. And I'm sure the public would like to know as well. So. Why can't we ask that and then somehow put it into the record? Like commissioner.
But we, but we can ask. We simply need to ask it at the meeting.
Yeah, you, you, you can't.
Wanted to know before we got to the meeting.
Yeah, you're, you're actually, when you're having that conversation via email. So it's one thing if we're going back and forth on, hey, we need to schedule a special meeting, who's available Wednesday, who's available Thursday? That's not a problem, but it's when you're. Discussing, particularly, you know, you really, a definite no-no is when you have an open application. Should never do that. But if you're, you're just discussing, uh, um, Nick sends out a solar article and somebody says, Nick, that's. Complete garbage. Solar is awful. It's a waste of time. No one would say that, Nick. But if somebody was, you know, you were having a dialogue about the merits of something. You're technically having a meeting when you're doing that. So it's not noticed. So the public's not privy to the conversation. It's not. Captured. It's, then no one's allowed to kind of view it. So I think that, that's where you run afoul.
But Steve, wouldn't you, wouldn't you consider, uh, an important question like that? To be kind of generic, not as, not as, you know, not. Like about that hearing as much as it is an important piece of information to have.
Oh, it definitely is. It's just you can't discuss it outside of the public forum. That's all. You can, it, it's fine to say, hey, Steve, can you research this? But going back and forth saying, well, I, I, I.
That's the.
I don't think it's impactful or not impactful.
And Tammy, I think that, that's the angle that may be helpful. Is like maybe putting the onus, like just replying to Steve or staff and saying, hey, at the meeting, can you remember to bring this up or? Uh, talk about this such that you get the answer. And I think Steve, you can answer the specific person, if they email you directly, can you?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yep.
Directly back to that person. It's because it's the group setting that creates the weird FOIA. Public nature of it.
Many of these, it seems like the group would benefit from their response. So that idea, I like that idea of like. If one of us wants to email them a question and say, can you bring? Can you bring the answer to the whole group? Can we have it at the top of the meeting? Because a lot of these discussions, when we try to fit it in at the end. That's when we don't have the energy and we don't have a real dialogue. Right, right. It might be too late for us to then use that information in making a decision.
Yeah, I agree with that.
The important part is that, that whatever the piece of information might be, it might make us vote yea or nay.
Yeah. And, and I, for that particular question, I did put that into, um, my memo. I didn't address it, spell it out in, in response to Ms., um, Langalas' question, but I did put the answer in, in the memo. So you could, you can definitely, you can definitely pose any questions to staff you want and hey, can we talk about this at the, at, at the meeting, whatever the, the topic is. Um, it, in, to your, to, to miss, to Bach's next point, yeah, uh, we've been running a lot of late nights. Like I said, I think we're. Clear, after tonight, we've cleared everything that was really on the books. There's a couple of applications pending, but there's not. You know, we don't have 10 coming in at once where it's going to take us. You know, every hour we have in our statutory clock to finish these up. We, we now can kind of move at a normal pace, I think.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Uh, if not, um, I want to thank you again for. Your patience, um, during that, uh, those extended hearings for, uh, ONG. Um, I really appreciate it. I also appreciate. How everyone, uh, is making an attempt, uh, to come to the meetings. Um. And with that, I will, uh, entertain, uh, a motion to, uh, adjourn. Uh, Tammy has moved and Darius has seconded. All those in favor? Take care. See you all in a couple of weeks.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Have a good one.